...afterwards. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For Lord Jesus, thank you. Thank you that we have Christmas, the Christmas to celebrate. For you so love the world that you came, lived among us, suffered and died on the cross, and it rose again that we might have forgiveness in life. I just give you thanks for that. In the busyness of all the junk that goes on during Christmas, may our minds and our hearts turn somewhat a little bit towards you. And I just ask that. In your precious name, the name above all names, in the name of a baby in a manger, but even greater so in the name of a coming king. Amen. All right. January the ninth, we have the organization meeting during the regular, or before the, during the regular meeting, board of finance meetings, and kind of get our act together for the coming year. Another meeting will be on the twenty-third of January, and then also on the February fifteenth, regular meeting here.
Mr. Bowen, I do want to point out that the finance meeting last year, it depends on when we get all the information, but we legally can move it back to the twenty-third, and we may do that if we don't get our seventeen eighty-two notice and different things like that. So that's typically what we do. But last year was a little bit later, so we went and we can buy statute to adapt.
I want to disappoint everybody. Okay, revisions of the agenda consists mostly of a couple additions to the HR. Public recognition, recognition, recognition this evening is a generous donation of four thousand fifty dollars. That's from Charcroft Investments, which is doing business as wings of that. That's a hundred and fifty dollars. Metzger Insurance, a hundred and fifty dollars. Artu Health, two thousand dollars. Crossroads Bank, five hundred dollars. Poet LLC, a hundred and fifty dollars. Manchester Farm Center, a hundred and fifty dollars. Manchester Realty, five hundred dollars. Downs, Tandy, and Josh.
Yep.
Hundred and fifty dollars. And PT Investments, a hundred and fifty dollars. Beacon Credit Union, a hundred and fifty dollars. And this will all be for the county attorney at Northfield High School this year. We also have an anonymous donation of three hundred dollars for Southwood Wrestling. Ten dollar donation from Angela Becker at Orthodontics, and that's for Southwood Elementary. And then we have a six hundred dollar donation from the Wabash County Community Foundation. And that'll go towards Metro North, Little Norse Tuition Program, scholarships, I'm sorry, scholarships. So I need a motion for approval.
So, again.
Call on favor, say aye.
Aye.
In opposition, the passes. Recognition tonight, Mr. Keyfaver.
All right, so we have done the staff spotlight different ways in the past. And so tonight we have with us Metro North and also Northfield Junior Senior High School. And so I'm going to call up Ashley Schaefer to come up here and be recognized. Ashley, the way this works, we did it in two thousand twenty-three, but actually Staff Member of the Year for Metro North Elementary of two thousand twenty-four. And so basically what we do is the First Farmers Bank and Trust, they sponsor this program. And we would just like to thank you for all that you do and give you a fifty-dollar card to go in our online store. And at this time, I'll let Mrs. Moore share any information about Ashley.
I would love to, and I'll keep it short, not short, but shortest. I think something that, I don't know how other buildings select their teacher and Staff Member of the Year, but at Metro North, staff members nominate and recognize. And part of that nomination has been, you know, as a staff member, if I'm nominating someone, then I have to explain why I'm nominating that person. And then it's selected by their peers. I just get the honor of recognizing them, which I think is a great honor. Ashley has already heard this before, but I think hearing what your peers have to say about your work is just phenomenal. So Ashley greets every single student with a smile every single morning and by name for both breakfast and lunch. She may not be in the classroom, but she works hard each day to make sure that every kiddo is getting fed, so they have the feel of her hard work in class. Every lunch is served with tremendous love. So another staff member wrote that she has always has a friendly smile on her face, and she is willing to go above and beyond to make sure our students are taken care of. She builds great connections with our students. And even when something could be considered as an inconvenience, she still does it with a smile on her face. I'm incredibly proud of Ashley. She started at Metro North, I think just a couple hours, and then worked her way up in our food service and became one of the members. And she is amazing at what she does and goes above and beyond every day for not just students, but for staff. And volunteers for time in the evening as well at different events. So it cannot be helped to have such staff members in here.
Let's give her a round of applause. You want to say anything?
I would like to thank you and all of my staff members at Metro North, because it is a privilege to work with them and to serve the kiddos. I love them and I love my job and I love the connection that I could talk with them and the staff too. So I'm very proud and honored to work for Metro North. Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, Teacher Jessica Hawley with the Little Norse. So again, for the Teacher of the Year, so I want to present this to you again. So there's that. And Mrs. Moore, I'll let you share.
All right. I think, you know, both Ashley and Jessica just epitomize what we live every day as our mission and vision. Jessica is not a teacher by trade. Her degree is something business, I can't really remember. But she, when her girls were little and started school, came to Metro North and started as a paraprofessional and was in our preschool and said, hey, I could do this. And while working full-time, went back to school with teenage girls who are very involved in things and got her CBA. And I just think that is something that's incredibly admirable and just sets such an example for her family. So I know, I'm super proud of her. Jessica goes above and beyond for the littles and her care. She's dedicated countless hours and resources to giving her students the best learning experiences that she can. Not only is she dedicated to her students, she's dedicated to her coworkers. She goes above and beyond to assist other staff members when she sees a need. She's compassionate towards everyone and is inspiring the next generation of learners. She is loved and refined. She genuinely cares and forms close relationships with her students. As a neighbor to her, I know I can always count on her if I need to borrow something for a lesson that I do not have. She will never hesitate to help. I think preschool teachers have like that closet, it's like Mary Poppins purse, where you can just reach it and pull it up. You need kitchen, I've got it. You need, I don't know, salt, I've got it. By the house. She never hesitates to help. She leads with a quiet confidence, and she treats each child as her own. She's worked hard on her degree along with teaching. She's a role model for me and for others. Jessica, as a three-year-old teacher, I think it's kind of like herding cats. And Jess knows her first school experience, and they come in all the week. You know, just the whole spectrum. I'm going to share one quick story about a little guy that started with us last year. Jess knew he'd come to school and was, didn't have a whole lot to say, really wasn't excited to be at school. But she created this community where he felt safe and secure and welcome and connected to his peers. And one day when I walked this little guy in, you know, all of his friends would, you know, greet him with good morning, and we're so glad you're here. And the day when he responded with that same excitement and went around hugging all of his friends, I had to go out in hallway and cry. And then the next day, I've like had my cam, you know, my phone going to videotape it, because that's the kind of community and care that she just has through. And so she's. Just, I feel incredibly blessed to do what I do and to. So, thank you.
Give her a round of applause. Crying is optional there. All right, next for Northfield for the Staff of the Year, Deb Corn. Deb, you can come up here, go around these chairs here a little bit for a second. So again, I'll let Mr. Snyder share anything, but again, on behalf of the First Farmers Bank and Trust, as a sponsor and MSD of Wabash, congratulations. There's that. Mr. Snyder.
Yeah, we do cry though. We do the same thing as what she described Metro North. So all the staff get a form that Mr. Keyfaver sent out, and then we just tally them up. And I don't have like a paper with all of the great things people said, but I will just say, I think I counted them up. Deb has been like a great, consistent person in the athletic office as we've went through some change over the years. And I will say, I mean, we've had some times, as you all know, of not the best integrity in the athletic office, but not with Deb. She's held it together. Person of a lot of integrity, which I admire for. When there's right or wrong, we talk and we figure it out. But I think she's been there with Jim Callmark, Tony Ugi.
Six of them.
Jeff Solomon. Clint Davis, Josh Moore, and now she's putting up with Chris Oswalt, which the.
And we had five principals too.
Oh, I didn't count those. But no, I came in in the middle of COVID, and we were navigating all that. And of course, Josh Moore had only been on the job a semester, and then I come in, and it's my first year at Northfield, and I was at Sharp Creek, but we had to figure it out. And when it came to the athletic office, we all talked, and she helped keep everything held together through all the times and change and turmoil we've had too. We've had a lot of positives and celebrations, and we've had some negative things too. But Deb stuck through it all, helped figure it out and navigate it, and she's been there to keep it consistent. With all the paperwork and the forms, I asked her to go digital a couple of years ago, because we were still doing a lot of the paperwork on paper, and it's digital. So I thought that might be the last straw. But she's figured out all the digital part too. So I really appreciate Deb. She's made all the changes and kept up with the change to the digital and been that constant force of organization in the athletic office, even though we haven't always had consistency with principals and ADs over the last thirty-some years. So, thanks, Deb.
I'm on year thirty-nine. I'm hoping to end on thirty-nine. But, you know, I've worked with some great people, six athletic directors, five principals. Not many people can turn around and say, I went through those steps. But evidently MSD does something right for someone like me to still be here thirty-nine years later. So I thank MSD.
Thank you.
All right, next the guy in the corner, Sandy Adams Weevil. So congratulations again on Teacher of the Year. So art teacher at Northfield, also coaches different things, and very, very talented. If you recall, we did bring a video at one time, and he was featured in the video that was presented, which was very, very good and excellent. So, Mr. Snyder.
Well, I've worked with Mr. Zewibel since my first year there. I think we both started the same year. One of the best decisions I made, the first ones, was Paul Voight, before he left, and Todd Elsroth said, hey, we've got a pretty good art teacher that's applied. And I'm like, well, art teachers, sometimes great ones are hard to find if you think he's the guy, just getting before I even go over there. So we did. So Mr. Zewibel was already there when I went. And I'm telling you, from the time I first stepped in his art room, I've been impressed ever since. He puts in extra time. He helps with athletics and goes to events. I mean, he's there in the morning before me, a lot of mornings, and they're after me. And I try to be there a lot, and he spends that kind of time at the school. And does the extra things to get our kids recognition. There's Scholastic Art Awards and Honeywell Center Awards and Huntington University Awards, Purdue Awards. There's been all these different, they don't have to enter those. And he goes through the extra work to get our kids out there and recognized for the art that they do. And so other people can see it, not just their parents. So I appreciate all that he does. He knows that, I think, as I tell him, hopefully often enough. But he's very humble, doesn't really do things to get recognition like this. I try to respect that, but you didn't have a choice this time. But one thing personal, close to home, is, I actually didn't vote. This was my staff too, and I didn't have anything in it. But one person that Mr. Zewibel's really helped is my nephew, Lane Ditten, who has had times through life where he's not been able to really find his way or what he loves. And you hooked him up with going to the scrap yards and finding metal and welding it together. And he's gotten all kinds of awards with your, with your help. So all kids he does that for, but that's just one that kind of hit close to home, because whenever I'm with, with Wayne, he always is talking about Mr. Zewibel. I think they usually just say calling Zee. But we appreciate Zee at Northfield. Mr. Zewibel, you do awesome. Thank you very much.
We have some other things that we're going to do with recognition, but can you pull up? You had Lane Ditten on our recognition today.
I did, he won one.
And since he's standing here, I want him, for everybody, just to know that have a connection there. So if you read that one only for now.
So I wanted a special congratulations to senior Lane Ditten. He was awarded the Bob and Peggy McCowen Award at the Honeywell Center Street Banner Contest on November fifteenth. That's an award given, there's tons of awards given in the county each year, but there's only one award for that one. And a Northfield student got it. And that special word is given to one person in memory of Bob and Peggy McCowen, and it's chosen by the family. And he was selected from all those by art teachers who recognize, by recognizing the impact of the program. That's what's key, the impact of his program, because we have one art teacher. And I'll just add too, you go in his room, you might have photography going on, drawing going on, ceramics going on, pottery going on, I mean, all these classes. He talks very little. The kids get to work, and then he goes around individually. There's like actually five or six classes in one period sometimes, and he manages it like Mary Poppins pulling things out of her ass. And it's like a workshop. Kids might be whispering, there might be music playing lightly in the background, but it's background, but it's just an awesome place to be. And a lot of kids at Northfield that normally wouldn't be involved in art find a place that they want to go in his art room and learn a lot, so.
So if you turn your attention behind Mr. Driscoll there, he's a great example of inspiring a community of learners to discover and achieve their passion potential, because Lane Ditten is one of those. We've had those conversations too about Lane and the things he's done. I know he got an award last year that everybody was very impressed with. Mr. Zewibel then said that the things that he's doing now are just even ten times better. So I'll let you talk anymore than what I said just.
About that?
About that or anything though, just about this award.
I have, I have three seniors right now that are taking AP, and they're going to be entering Scholastics. It's actually due Monday. They're all vying for a national gold portfolio. And if they win that, Lane's actually a four-for-two, if they win that, they would get twelve grand. And huge amount of recognition, and it's not, it's, it's set up as a scholarship, but it's, it's cash. It's not scholarship. That's just for the boosters and donors and stuff. But so we're going to have four seniors, we're going to have four people vying for that. So that's, that's the creme de la creme. They only give out eight, so we're going for it. As for the teacher of the year thing, I feel very honored. And I appreciate being part of this system, because I've been a part of some systems that don't appreciate the arts, don't value the arts. And I'm so lucky to be part of a staff and faculty that put me in place and just get out of my way and appreciate me and support me. So I appreciate it. I love that. So that's all I have to say.
And then you'll see Adam on Saturday, his farmer's market too, with his own projects and his artistic equipment.
I'll add again though, those contests and things that kids are doing are not a school requirement. That's because he chooses to do them on his own, so that's appreciated.
All right, a couple more things. I know a lot of you are here just for these recognitions, but if we can go over some more, and then we'll dismiss you if you'd like to go, but you're obviously welcome to go too. I know some people get to go out for dinner after this too. So it's always a good thing. But next thing, we have kind of a surprise here, and Coach Tom Fennicle. We want to recognize him. He doesn't have the players here. We didn't know if the players were going to come here at one time or not, but tell us a little bit about what happened this year in volleyball.
Well, we got to play in November. And that's always key. If you get to play in November, it's a good season. And we were fortunate enough to win a state championship in our group this year. And our kids, there's basketball game tonight where several of our kids are there. And there's practice in Monday night where several of our kids are there. And we could have brought two of our kids tonight, but they're both like, you have to go? No, I don't have to go. I'll go for all of us. Perhaps a Tuesday is not a good day for them, but it was a great honor to represent us and represent our school and our corporation and get an opportunity to play for a championship and then be fortunate enough to win one, because we've been there before and not won one. So it's really fun to get the blue ribbon as opposed to the red ribbon.
And as you know too, Mr. Fennicle, Coach Fennicle, AD Fennicle, what else do you do? You sweep the floors.
A couple gym floors.
But the other thing is Hall of Fame, Volleyball Coaches Hall of Fame, which is a great honor too. And a lot of you probably knew about that. You know, we had the new gym floor, and everybody was going to come see the new gym floor, but that really wasn't true. It was more for the Hall of Fame, and so we really appreciate him. So as recognition here, just him, like you said, it would be hard to bring everybody here, because they have all these different projects and all these different activities that they have, because they're very, very busy, student athletes and other things, so.
I'd like to, Mr. Fennicle's success just doesn't happen. Like my granddaughter, fourth grade, was so inspired by this season that you had to call out her clothes Sunday. So she's off and going to take a shot at it, I think. So starting in fourth grade, that's how you build success.
All right, on behalf of the team, the coach, let's give him a round of applause, and he can take that back.
I didn't get applause. I just assumed it was in the hallway, you guys. But on behalf of the kids, I'd like to present medals to members of the board. Like you got yours and Tim got his, but I'd like to present medals to the board just because of what you guys have done for us and the recognition you guys have given us. And for more than anything else, for allowing me to coach for as long as you've allowed me to coach. It's, it's the best place in the building, in my opinion. The gym is the best classroom in the building. And I truly appreciate to get to be in the gym. Now, nothing against art room, I swear.
Opposite corners here.
And we're really close in proximity as far as gym and art room. I mean, they're pretty close. It's, you get instantaneous feedback on what you're doing, what you don't do. And it's a great place, and I'm very honored and very proud to get to be a part of the gymnasium. So at this time, I'd like to give you guys, pass along the medal to you guys. Thanks.
If we can go over these real quickly, I'll go to the next two, and then we'll let everybody go, because we have some other things we'd like to recognize. We could get time for a break. But we just want to recognize attorney, school attorney Steve Downs. He is no longer officially, unless Josh is not here, right, Josh?
Yeah.
But he is actually retiring officially as of December thirty-first. Is that really true?
So he says.
So he says. So he's been working still some, but hasn't been art for a while. He was with MSD of Wabash County for fourteen years, so we just wanted to recognize all the things that he's done for us for those fourteen years. And also, Mr. Matt Driscoll, school board member. I don't know if you saw that on there?
I did now.
So just to recognize, and we can talk about this more later, but twenty-five years, twenty-five years as a school board member, over five hundred meetings. That's just the meetings here. He also has been the liaison, our board member for Heartland Career Center, so a lot of meetings there too. I will say that I send an update every Saturday morning. So in the last few years I've been around here, I don't know if he's read verbatim every one I've done.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. He's usually on the edge of his seat on Saturday morning waiting for those, over four hundred updates. And I will tell you though too, after looking at the pictures on the wall there, it looks like the smile is even getting bigger, so I think he's really loving it.
His hair goes away, that smile.
So anyway, we want to, so we know he's having fun, but we really appreciate his dedication to this, because that is a long time. He actually, just to pull this up real quick again, he has been with four superintendents, sixteen board members, other board members, and three different attorneys. And so we'll see how many more that he can outlast. So let's give him a round of applause. And finally, I'm just going to let Mr. Snyder read a few more recognitions, and then we'll have a break so people can leave if they would like to.
The end of the art one, not only Lane won an award, but we also had some banner winners. Emma Bone, Emerson Zewibel, and Chloe Youngblood, who I wanted to mention. They have banners that are down by the Honeywell Center and won awards that night. TRC awards, I don't think we ever mentioned. This is all academic, all-conference. We would like to recognize students that achieved all-conference academic first team for the fall semester. That'd be Ellie Baker, JoJo Drancyk, Eden Hoover, Macy Overlander, and Emma Wardock. Honorable mention for the conference to Blake Aderman, Isaiah Beal, Ava Coghlan, Maddox Daniels, Cameron Coon, Jada Lynn, Josie Lynn, Gabby Hopper, Jackson Martin, Ryland Miller, Madeline Moore, Carter Rogers, Turner Stephens, and Mara Zolman. The TRC awards are based on this criteria. First team is top fifteen percent of your class, a three-point oh, three-point eight GPA for first semester. And honorable mention is top thirty percent of your class, which you know if our classes are only sixty, seventy in a class, that's very few. That's hard to get. So we always complain at the, at the meetings when we have like bigger schools in there that they get to give more kids. But they also have to have a three-point four GPA. So we're really extremely proud of our athletes that not only go to practice every night, they get their work done. And we want to compliment their work, not only on the courts and fields, but also in the classroom every day. And then last weekend, Ryan Bales, who's from Northridge High School, they hosted an eighteen wrestling tournament. Whenever we get these exemplary behavior reports, we'd like to share them. So this past Saturday, the wrestling team got one. Mr. Bale said, "We hosted an eighteen wrestling event filled with a lot of competitive matches. There was great sportsmanship displayed throughout the day by all athletes, coaches, officials, and spectators. Thank you to all the participating schools for their display and effort of great attitudes on the day." So we got that on Monday morning from the IHSA website. They put it in, so that was nice to get.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. And Mrs. Moore, I believe you have one?
I said, we also had three banner winners. Lila Martin was a grade-level banner. Eliza Water was a grade-level banner winner. And Chloe Davis was our school banner winner. And I know Mr. Keyfaver did some tallying, and maybe you've already shared the percentage of MSD banner winners.
Yeah, and I don't have that with me right here. Maybe I should put that on. There was a bunch, so, yes.
So it's just, it's just super impressive. As an elementary teacher, I am licensed to teach art. Never should I ever teach art. So we are very blessed to have incredible, talented artists that are also teachers. And that's sometimes hard to find, that not only are they incredible artists, but they're also just as talented. also just as talented as educators, so I am very thankful for those art teachers, because I travel dry and stick person.
All right, well, thank you. So we've taken a lot of time, but this is really the most fun of the meeting, sorry guys about other things that we do, but just recognizing the spotlight. So if you would like to stay, you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave, so we'll just take a little break here real quick. If you wanna get up and leave, that's fine. Congratulations, everybody. Door's unlocked, so I don't know why, we just want somebody to grant it.
Really?
It's unlocked though. It's unlocked though.
Public comment on Jen Hyings only. If not, an opportunity to review the minutes or take motion to approve?
We go within minutes.
Second. All in favor of approval in the minutes, November the fourteenth, say aye.
Aye.
Claims and payroll, we have two, we have number nine and we have number ten.
We have claims first.
No. Yeah. I'm trying to move along. Questions on claims?
I have one.
I just got one, the countertops are fifty-two thousand.
Yeah, those were serving lines, so if you remember back in the summer, we salvaged some, because they need to replace the serving line countertops at the Northfield and Southwood High Schools. And so that total cost is split in half for one building and the other building. So we actually purchased those over the summer, and so they've been in, in installations since the start of the school year, we just haven't received an invoice until now, so.
So that is just the new serving line?
Yes, the serving countertops and the lines, yes.
That's a question I had too.
That's all I have. I'll move to repair.
No, claims first.
All started out.
Claims.
Second.
All in favor of approving claims this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. All right, now we're to payroll nine and ten, clip those both together.
Yeah, and those are a lot higher than normal, and a lot of that's to do with the, you have the retro pay that actually got started before, but that's kind of the after effect. And also, we had a lot of claims for sports, coaches, teacher academic stuff during that time. Our next payroll will also be large as well, because you'll also throw the teacher appreciation grant dollars that we receive from the state on there as well, so it'll be higher than that.
Huge.
Yep.
All in favor?
All seconded.
Nine and ten. All in favor for approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Financial summary?
Yeah, so in your packet is the end of the month for November balances, so outlines each fund's balances and where we currently sit at the end of November. Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary to those. Which then le, leads to the cash flow projections. Obviously, there's only one month left in the, in the calendar year, so those estimates are gonna be pretty, feel pretty confident, and that's where we'll end, the year at in our education and operation fund balances on those cash flow projections.
After the first year, you'll project twenty-four?
Yeah, I usually start working on that in January and then lay that out from February on.
Yeah, without a question on mine, that's a very important management tool to go on a year. All right, questions, Mr. Coon? If not, we'll through the human resource. Under resignation this evening, we have Barbara Kennedy, paraprofessional, Southwood Elementary. Lori Schultz would be under employment, that's temporary bus driver in North. Devin Dale, temporary math teacher at Southwood High School. Carmella Turner, paraprofessional at Southwood Elementary. Rita Scholes, cook, Northfield High School. Rachel Epper, junior high cheer coach, Southwood High School, being poet, sixth grade girls' volunteer basketball coach, and that's at Southwood High School. Termination, number one sixty-seven, that's effective at the first of the month behind, in December. And then leave, we have one sixty-eight, and you can see the timeframe for that.
I'll move to approve HR. Second.
All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, reports, Heartland and I don't have that.
Unfortunately, I missed last one of the meeting, but Mr. Keith Faber had.
Yeah, we've, yeah, so we're still, our, our main focus still is just looking at what we can do to be able to help with the roof project and HVAC system and figuring all that out, and maybe looking at, you know, new formulas. So with the five school districts, everybody's in a different spot financially, so it makes it a little more challenging as far as how that's gonna work, but I think, but one thing we tried to really mention is that let's make sure we just get something started, at least since the budget already for twenty twenty-four, start with budgeting for the roof for the twenty twenty-five calendar year, so. And then maybe have some kind of a timeline to do all the other projects that we're looking at, so. But it's still gonna be a challenge, and I'm sure the governing board will be able to figure all that out.
Right.
Or just the advisory board.
Yeah.
That's all I have on that one, so.
And then my report, I just wanna mention a couple things. First of all, this is just, I know the teachers really get, they're very excited when I send out a Monday email to say that we're breaking records again about having no delays or cancellations, so as of now, no delays, no cancellations for eighty-one days so far, broken all the records that back in the history books, and if we make it through next week, it'll be eighty-nine days, because that's our first semester is eighty-nine days, second semester will be ninety-one. So it's just kind of fun though to see that. But one thing, very specifically though, I believe consistency is very important, and it helps with our students to be able to be consistent, even though probably the older ones really, really like those delays. So I don't know if Dr. Coon wanted to mention any more, but I did put on here about the project update, of course, that the locker rooms project started at Southwood, Northfield will start after the county tourney, so they're starting to tear things up and making things better. So we just really appreciate the flexibility of, of the people in the schools. You haven't had that yet, Mr. Snyder, but you will, and so people have to be flexible. So appreciate the board, everybody getting behind to make this just a great improvement to our, to our locker rooms. Been like that since sixty-two, sixty-three, so it's good to have all the improvements. So that's all I have.
Anything on Mr. Gray? When we want to do business, we have four items this evening. First one is recommendation to salvage an Alstom's seven thousand tractor, pulling tractor disguised as, which has been in Northfield residency.
Yes, and I believe it was something that the FFA had worked on, Smitty was kind of the main person of that, he was teaching, and so that's just a tractor that they have no use for at this time, and would like to salvage it so that they can sell it at the auction, where the money can then be put back into the FFA program at Northfield.
Expect all the farmers here to go there on it. At least get the price higher, so we're gonna be stuck with it though.
It's green.
I'll move to accept.
Second.
All in favor of allowing it to go to salvage, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Second would be recommendation through the end of the year resolution.
Yeah, we always do this at this time of the year, since we don't have another meeting in December, we'll need to close out our calendar year, and so this is just approval to reappropriate different accounts as needed, so that we can finalize that budget for the end of the calendar year and move forward for the twenty twenty-four budget.
All in favor, say aye. Third, I recommend, recommendation to distribute the teacher appreciation grant stipends.
Yes, so this is, been an annual thing, the state has appropriated monies that go back to teachers as appreciation grants, and so they have sent us our amounts, and then we are wanting to distribute those to the teachers that qualify for those stipends here on the next payroll.
And administrators are included in there?
Not in the teacher appreciation grant dollars that we receive from the state, those all go strictly to certified teaching, teacher staff. And so that money is appropriated out based off of their evaluation scores, whether they are effective or highly effective.
I just saw there a long list of things.
Now, we do give out some other appreciation grant stipends out of rainy day fund for things like counselors and other positions.
I'll move to the stipends. Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve the appreciation grant stipends, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, in my position. And they've been patiently waiting over this.
It's been planned over.
Recommendation to prove construction manager is constructor, known as CM Little C.
Yeah, so when we first started discussions on how we wanted to work with Sharp Creek, and we decided that we were wanting to add on to Northfield, and also a cafeteria on to Metro North, we knew that there was gonna be a lot of work involved, and we wanted to make sure that we did this project right, and so we wanted to bring along a construction manager as constructor to help us along with this process. We had a committee that consisted of Mr. Keith Faber, myself, Mr. Holly, Mr. Bowman, and Mr. Hopper, that reviewed, we, we received six proposals, we reviewed those six proposals, and we interviewed three vendors from that. And we would like to recommend YD and BR selective representative for the CMC moving forward with this, these projects that we have going on at Northfield and Metro North.
Motion, that you might include the YD and company.
I'll move to approve YD, that's the CMC, those constructions.
All seconded.
All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. All right. That takes care of that. Any unfinished business or board policies?
No. Unless you want to.
Public comment this evening, permit, no? Okay. All right, anything from the board itself?
Uh, yeah. It just proves I didn't read everything today. I didn't know I was on there. To be honest, I didn't.
You did.
I really did, I read through there and I go, okay, I see this, and then I go down to what's coming. It's an extreme honor, you, you caught me there, didn't realize it was twenty-five years, really. My wife probably passed. It's been an honor to serve, so. Met a lot of good people up here, so, so thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
My contribution has been fantastic.
I hope I do all right.
You're doing well. All right, anything else?
I just wanted to add, a couple things, I appreciate Matt and everybody that's here on the board, but obviously, some of the, you know, the thoughts and the feelings that the teachers shared and our staff and our principals, I think it attributes to, you know, our, our school district and, and the feelings and the, that they put towards these kids. And I think there's a little bit more than just, not just teachers, and I appreciate that we have to put forth towards, for these kids in this area, and look forward to working with this group of great people that we got to, to meet on this project, and we hope that it adds even more value to our school district.
Thanks, Scott. Guess we're adjourned.